All right, we'll have an invitation for citizens to schedule a time on the commission agenda for an item not listed. Okay, hearing none, move number four, approval of the agenda. Any changes or any comments on the agenda?
No, just that I'd spoken with you before the meeting. I'm expecting a phone call was supposed to come. I thought it was going to come yesterday, didn't. It's very important to me. I need to take that. If it comes at an opportune time during the meeting, I may step out. So, just so people are aware.
Anything else on the agenda? All right, we'll declare the agenda approved. Consent agenda items. Look for a motion. Is there a second? All right. Any discussion on this consent agenda?
One thing, in the typed report under personnel action notices, Melanie Kent, it says she's in the sheriff's office. She's actually out at community health. She's the new part-time admin assistant out at community health. I think it was just something that didn't get changed as that was that report was getting typed out. So, she's actually not in sheriff, she's at community health.
All right. Anything else on the consent agenda? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. All right, routine business, approval of claims. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. All right, department head reports. We'll start with equalization.
Well, not a lot, really just some dates and times and things that we'd like to bring to the board's attention. First thing that I've got on the list here is, we have been meeting, Joyce and I have been meeting with Brookings Utilities along with Jim Sampson and Jason Mooseburger over there. Brookings Utilities is looking at hiring a company called AE2S. They're a surveying company. And we're at the point now in discussions where I'd like to invite any of the commissioners that would like to attend with us, the next meeting that's going to take place. They're not looking for input at the stage that we've been to. Brookings Utilities is going to do it with or without any participants helping. What they're looking at doing is for utilities work, they're going to hire this civil survey company, AE2S, to come in and do a survey, I don't know what the term would be, a survey specific coordinate system. They are going to take every plat that's been filed in Brookings City and hire this company to come out and re-survey every pin that's in the city and put that into GIS for the mapping system. And it's very important for them because two feet off when they go out and they survey, basically it's the 4-1-1 location, they're going to be able to do it off of a GIS layer. They're going to do it with or without, they've budgeted for it, but they're at the point now where they're, it's very expensive to do this and it's going to take some time. But if we ever want to acquire that GIS layer to have a survey specific, I mean, when you look on our beacon site and you look at a lot and it says, here's where the property line is, that's where the property line is going to be. So, we've been meeting with them. We've been to two or three meetings now. The next one is going to be February 16th at nine o'clock. If any commissioners would like to attend with me and Jim to go over there because at some point, they're going to be looking to see if any partners would like to come on board. Again, that would be all your decision. It would be beneficial to the county as well as to the city, but they're going to do it with or without participants. They've budgeted for it. So, and it's going to be at the utility, Brookings Utilities out there, February 16th at nine o'clock, and it's scheduled from nine to 12. Oh, yeah, right now, that's one of the goals that utilities would like to do. Right now, the county maintains a GIS layer, the city maintains a GIS layer, utilities maintains a GIS layer. We are all three doing the same work in different venues. And if we could all get onto the same and do a shared layer within Brookings City limits, we'd have, and I don't know where it would go down the road as far as updating specific needs, but if we could have a shared mapping layer, especially one that's survey specific would be, I mean, we would be setting the trend probably, who knows? It's a big deal if it ever comes to fruition, so.
Where is that meeting?
Brookings Utilities.
Did they indicate cost of how much share or anything like that?
He did. I don't have that. Again, because there hasn't been, he said he budgeted for it, Eric Witt, is the contact out there. He's budgeted for it in his budget. He's got it approved. He's doing it.
Yeah.
Right, but did he indicate what a buy-in would be?
Nope, not yet. Not yet. And that's why we're at the point now, before the first couple of meetings that we went to was kind of, we met with him and he wanted to know if we do this, because he says, we want to do it right the first time. What would the county need? What would Jim like to see in his? And that's kind of where it's been at. It's been more discussion at this point. But it's at the point now, I think, where commissioner input would definitely be helpful. So, the invitation is opened for any of you that would like to attend.
For us to have the future shared layer situation, would we have to be part of this process now?
Hasn't been indicated yet. I don't, I think if it went through and we didn't participate and we requested it, you know, they could probably hold us a little bit for ransom if you want this, what would you be willing to do? But right now, that conversation hasn't gone there, so.
And we've been very, we've been very appreciative that they've invited us from the get-go because we've attended two or three meetings and they've been very open to having.
I think it's very helpful that Jason Mooseburger has gone over there and opened that invitation to the county for Jim, saying, hey, we're going to do this over here. Would you guys like to, like to be recipients of this is where it started. And then it kind of went into the cost, would any, would you like to cost share into it? And at that point, you know, we were still in discussion, so we didn't, we didn't bring it up to you guys at that point. But it's, we're two or three meetings into it now, so I think, I think now would be a good time. Well, yeah, we're kind of holding the pictometry flyover, 95,300 for the flyover. Cost shared between four partners over three years, and they're one of the partners, so it's kind of give and take. So, we're looking at $7,800 and change a year to each entity for the next three years, so they've cost shared with us, so something to consider. I have a meeting with the city council on March 2nd at 6:00 PM that I'll be attending to just go over the city changes that have taken place, same as we did with you in the last meeting. Our notices were sent last Wednesday to qualified presort. Those are scheduled, I haven't heard back from them. It's either going to be the 12th, if they can get them printed Friday, this Friday. Assessment notices will be going out in the mail. If not, it will be Tuesday, the 16th. Legislation that's affecting kind of our office, that's in the works right now. We've got House Bill 1086, which was the least residential land classification. As far as where it was at, it passed the senate, it failed the house, it was put in for reconsideration, and it has failed reconsideration. Not really sure where that's, that bill's at. House Bill 1239, don't know where this is coming from, but there's a bill out there to make the director of equalization an elected position now, same as auditor, treasurer, all of that. I have voiced my concerns on that and to our three representatives and heard back from them that they're all on, they don't know where it's coming from or why. Hopefully, it doesn't come through. I just told them, I said, this is the very foundation of the taxing system is our office and we need to be fair and impartial at all levels, not political. And to change it potentially every four years to somebody who has no working knowledge of the assessment and administration portion could be catastrophic. So, they're all, our three at least are not in favor of that.
Chris, what was the number of that one?
House Bill 1239.
Okay.
House Bill 1071, there's a codified law out there that says the director of equalization must meet with the commissioners on the first Tuesday in April. They're changing that to say the first meeting in April. That has flown through everything. I don't see that being a problem. So, it'll be the first meeting in April when, by codified law, that I'll have to meet with the commissioners and discuss my job duties and responsibilities. House Bill 1101, don't know too much about this. It's to create a program to encourage housing development. And this one passed out of committee. Not sure where that's at yet. They're looking at incentives to build residential housing. And Joyce has met or voiced her concerns and stuff and suggested that maybe it can be implemented as a discretionary formula type program should the county adopt that.
And that's for the municipalities, isn't it? Is that the one?
Yes.
Yeah, allowing them to do that.
Yep. House Bill 1007, it's just the, the payment for ag productivity to pay SDSU to review the productivity methods and models. Essentially, what it boils down to is a new soil survey done by SDSU. And they've allocated or are allocating 175,000 for that study to be done. Department of Revenue was working on getting us new table ones or a new soil survey implemented to all of the counties with adjustments and ratings and things like that. Mike Howdyshell has put that on hold at this point. There's no sense in them continuing that work if this study is going to go through. So, they're waiting to see if SDSU, if everything passes. If that's the case, then SDSU will do a new soil survey type study and reallocate and get that data to us, and we'll implement that at that time. Senate Bill 3 was a bill to revise the income criteria to be classified as ag. Right now, it had to be 33 and 1/3 of your gross income had to come from ag pursuits, and they're changing that or they're suggesting changing that down to, I think it's 2,000 or 2,500. So, basically, if you, you still have to meet two of the three criteria. If you have a cow and sell a cow for $2,500 a year, you can be considered ag.
Is that gross income?
Just $2,500. Yeah, gross. I personally don't think it's the right thing. Every little hobby farm out there could be ag, which would be a big shift, but again, we'll have to follow what the legislation does. So, if they set that criteria, our office will follow accordingly. And Senate Bill 136 is a bill to adjust soils to grass around lakes. They want the first 50 feet around lakes and riparian areas basically to be reclassified if they're crop soils to classify them as grass soils to lower their value.
And we've already adjusted the water acres around Lake Sinai in the past, so we were asked if any of us have done this in the past, and I said, yes, we have.
The only concern I have with that is, is this an annual thing? It's 50 foot. If we get into a three-year drought cycle and the water recedes, do I have to look at my imagery and adjust that back and say, this is now crop? I, you know, I don't know. I had one gentleman come in questioning some water around, he has got two tracts of land in different quarters that the water comes into, and he was wondering if we'd ever, if he could have adjustments done. I went in and looked, and it was in an area that we had already adjusted to water. And when I measured it out, I said, you're getting about six acres credit for water acres right now on this tract. And when I measured it using the imagery, it was only about four and a half. So, I said, you're already getting about an acre and a half credit. And it's something that I certainly wouldn't want to do every year, to measure every bit of water where that water line is. So, I think once, if they bring it to our attention, we'll address them at that time. And if it needs adjusted, we'll adjust it, and it'll be a one-time fix. And we're not, we're not going to look at changing an acre here or there every year. Board dates, I'll give Stacy, I'll give you this copy. Oh, do you already have it?
Yeah, I think it's, I don't know if I have it on.
Okay. Just some other dates. Again, March 2nd, I'm going to be meeting with Brookings City Council at six o'clock to go over their changes. Also, March 2nd at 9:30 in the morning, we'll meet with the small-town clerks and we'll go over and give them all of their information. That'll be down in room 103. We do that annually. Go over their changes with them, what we've done in Bruce Elkton, so on, so forth. March 3rd will be the township board meeting out at the Swiftel Center at 11:00 AM. That's the same annual meeting, and I'll give the townships their information and do the PowerPoint presentation at that time. March 17th will be the last day to appeal in writing to the local boards any evaluation challenges. March 21st through the 25th, that week, is when the local boards need to meet as an equalization board. March 28th then will be the last, oh, that's when we need to receive their, any board decisions and changes back to our office. And then April 5th will be the last day to appeal local board decisions and changes. And then the county board needs to meet the week of April 12th through May 3rd. And this will be Stacy's game to schedule with you.
I think we should schedule some dates now. I think we usually schedule one full day. I'd like to get that on the calendar now before everybody's calendars start filling up. The first day we can start is April 12th. That's a Tuesday, and it's not a commission day. So, if that's something you want to do, put it on, we can start at 8:30 in the morning and fill up that day. Does that work? I'm seeing everybody's heads.
Are you okay?
Yeah? Okay, let's plan for that then, April, right on April 12th.
And what time would we start?
Let's start at 8:30.
Hopefully, it won't take all day.
Hopefully not. And then the last thing that I have here is, just a heads up to you guys, I have to potentially, well, I'll have to attend, but right now, it's tentatively scheduled for February 29th, an executive board meeting for SDAAO, as I'm the president-elect of that. Our president is right now trying to coordinate dates, and that will be out at Pizza Ranch in Fort Pea. I think that's all I have. Any questions?
All right. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you.
Bob.
The comprehensive plan staff report is submitted as a separate document, and that will be the comprehensive plan public hearing will be at 1:00 PM this afternoon. And I've got the planning commission chairperson coming in to be with me during that hearing. And the plan is probably to read the staff report to you in the beginning at the start of that meeting, and then we'll go from there. And Mr. Mueller will be here to answer any questions that you may have in our development of the plan. The monthly planning meeting that was scheduled for February 2nd was canceled due to the inclement weather. There was no scheduled hearings on that particular agenda. There was one question we was going to ask the zoning board, and that's all been pushed back to the March meeting. We did have training scheduled, and we will schedule that training for later in the year also. I submitted two be-it-noted items for the state and local agreement to be signed at a later time today. There's a pandemic planning coordinating committee meeting scheduled for Thursday, February 11th. Our local emergency planning committee is meeting February 18th. I did speak to the ag relations chamber of commerce committee on February 2nd and gave them an update of the, there was more concern with the county development and the building permit issues and things like that. And I also snuck in some emergency management stuff and how to take care of livestock and trying to get their assistance in helping us. One major issue in the world of emergency management is what do you do with pets in an evacuation? Because the Red Cross shelters will not take animals. So, we're trying to reach out to the agricultural community to see, you know, can they assist us in finding places where we can pre-plan ahead of time to put animals? You know, the large animals, such as if we get a horse barn hit or something, we think that they will be taken care of pretty easy. Our biggest concern is going to be the small pets in town. So, that's just, just to let you know, we will be reaching out to other agricultural entities, and if they listen to this, we'll be more than happy, just give me a call and we'll be more than happy to talk to you. We are concerned about the pets because, believe it or not, about 75% of the people will not leave their pets to go to a shelter. And that's really going to be a big issue depending upon the type of natural disaster or none, or man-made disaster if it ever hits. We are currently working on county-wide credentialing. That's the forms that were passed out earlier and their ID cards. I got them, I can show you at the end of the meeting if you'd like. And the plan is to get the county commission fully credentialed first, and then we're going to branch out to the highway department, sheriff's department. All the fire departments have already been reached out to. My department's already fully credentialed and go down the line. And basically, anyone that rethink in the county that would be able to or have to respond to an emergency during a disaster will end up with an ID card. And this is a statewide system. The state bought the system, and we don't have the ID card printer for these particular cards, but they are in Huron and Sioux Falls. So, basically, I type everything or get assistance in typing everything in the computer, and then I just go over and sit down and watch them be printed when we need them.
Those forms too are in, or should be in front of you on your desks this morning to fill out. Give back to Bob whenever you get a chance.
I've got a few of them already submitted. There's two, I believe, that's still not submitted. And tomorrow, we have got a social media class in Sioux Falls. I'm taking Ms. Stephenson with me, and it's an emergency management class, talks about social media and in case of a natural disaster or none. What you have to realize, emergency management's not just disaster-related anymore, it's to this all hazards type thing. So, that's why we approached the county commission department to see as a, the spokesperson for the county to get as much public relations training that we can. And this, I feel, is a good, a good class. It used to be, well, nothing was going to be put on social media, no Twitter, no Facebook, no nothing, but the world has changed. Everything's on Facebook, everything's on Twitter now. So, this class should assist us in that. And I've run a Twitter account for our pandemic planning coordinating committee, that's under my department. And of course, the county's got their Twitter and Facebook page through Brookings County and the county commission department. So, that's where we'll be tomorrow. And February 16th, there's training at the fire department. There's two training sessions, one's in from noon to five and the other one's from five to 10:00. And it refers to what, what do you do if there's an accident such as on the interstate highway? And I was contacted by local tow truck companies that this would be a training worth going to. It's when the state troopers and the other law enforcement entities come and train people what to do on an accident scene. And I have been called out to the interstate several times, especially when tractor trailers or stuff called, Holland has this materials, and it can be rather dangerous out there because when people see those red lights, instead of slowing down for some reason in their mind, it means speed up. And people, people get seriously hurt out there, so. I'll be attending that training on February 16th. We've got the home show, February 20th and 21st. We had a claim in your packet. Once again, me and the sheriff's department will be the lead. I'll be the lead, I presume. The sheriff's getting tired of me pounding this off on them. But we'll be there, and local emergency planning committee will have our booth set up, and the local emergency planning committee has agreed to pay for the booth this year. So, and it's a good outreach. This year, I'm going to have an informal poll set up on how do, how do people get their weather alerts? Do they get them off of a TV channel? Do they get them off the internet? Do they get them off their cell phones? We're just going to have a short survey. And if they pass the survey, then I give them one of them little emergency wills that I bought with LEPC money. So, we'll see if that works. It may or may not work. Usually, people walk by, usually if you're not giving something away free, they just walk right by your booth. So, we'll see if they're willing to take a, take a short survey. And in, in March, you guys have got the short course, what you guys call your short course, the emergency manager, not the emergency, South Dakota County Association meeting in Pea. Well, I had, I've got a travel request in for the day before that starts. Come to find out, my, my training is a day and a half now, so I'm going to have to modify my training schedule to do a day and a half. But so happens when my training ends, it looks like the instructor that's training us for a day and a half before goes over to your guys' commission and gives you a class known as ICS 402, which is for senior leadership. So, I may try to stay for that too. Just, it'd be a couple hours extra, but I'll, I'll. And if you are in Pea and you got a chance to attend that 402 course, I recommend you all to attend it. Because that's when, that gives you the, you've heard me stress ICS and tell you FEMA says ICS is important. Well, the 402 level is from the executive level down to show you what, what you would actually end up doing. Sometimes at a county level, county commissioners will get thrown into situations that may not be textbook by FEMA standards, and it's always going to be that way. So, it'd be interesting though for you to see, quote unquote, what's supposed to happen and then what Bob Hill thinks is supposed to happen. And we'll let you, let you determine which one, which one makes more sense for Brookings County. Because, you know, we, we need as much training as we can get. And on the legislative side, we've got House Bill 1100, and it basically just says, if you're going to rezone property, it tells you what size sign you use. Our zoning, our current zoning ordinance does not require us to post signs, so 1100 really doesn't apply to us at this time. And basically, all it's doing is standardizing signs for rezoning if you use them. And then House Bill number 1140, which Mr. Kay spoke about last time, and that is cleaning up some language such as today's comprehensive plan hearing. Basically, the way South Dakota codified law is now, it's either you adopt the comprehensive plan or you reject the comprehensive plan. Well, if 1140 does pass after July 1st, then, then you would be able to make minor changes to a bill such as, or a resolution such as ours this afternoon, but as of now. And we'll keep you informed on that. That, right now, I haven't seen a lot of opposition to 1140. And that's all I've got. Any questions until this afternoon? Yes, madam?
Bob, the booth at the home show, is that all that it has is emergency management materials or does it have other things on it?
Well, we always put, we make it into a county booth.
Okay.
It has to have a component of hazardous materials because the local emergency planning committee is paying for it out of funds that we get from all the, all the entities in Brookings County that has hazardous materials, they pay into a state fund. And so, but we always put the little brochures up that talks about the county and the county courthouse and.
Because our booth at the local showcase was so nice, and I, I didn't know if some of those materials could carry over for what you're.
Just about all those materials come from my LEPC booth.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome. Michael.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Certain times, you always hear, you know, you shouldn't follow someone better than you. The last two are such great reports, and I have nothing for you. I feel pretty let down, so I'll make a few things up. Now, what I have coming up in the future is, I'll be going up to campus this afternoon. We'll be spending some time at the Veterans Resource Center, assisting veterans that are going to school up there with some of their claims, also a little bit looking into their education benefits. Then the next day, on the 10th, we'll go up there, and they're trying to figure out where to put the Veterans Affairs Office. It had been in the basement of the union, it now moved over to one of the dormitories. And now, they're talking about trying to get into a central spot so that the veterans, you know, a lot of, veterans are pretty much non-traditional students because they've missed some time. So, a lot of them live off-campus, and so, we're trying to figure out what would be the best place where they would have time, downtime, where they can relax, do their homework, and yet still have access to the Veterans Affairs Office. And so, that's one of the things we're looking at. The other thing, on the 11th, I will be going down to Sioux Falls for a welfare training. This is part of the catastrophic funds and so that all the counties do their, their claims more or less in a consistent manner. And then on February 1st, I did attend the chambers, Veterans Affairs Committee over at the chamber office. Some of the legislation, most of it is dealing with someone with veterans preference. We're still trying to find out, and actually, they're meeting today in Pea. I was sick yesterday, so I didn't go out, but they're meeting today with some of them to find out a little bit more about the Medicaid expansion. And other than that, we had 119 phone calls coming in, made 100 out, 30 veterans stopped in, and 48 on the welfare side. Part of that is, is we did have a couple people stop in inquiring about funerals, and that usually brings a larger, because we have the whole family in there for those. And I guess that's pretty much what I have.
Questions? Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Should have received in your packet the finance officer's report, and this is from December. And.
that usually brings a larger, because we have the whole family in there for those. And I guess that's pretty much what I have.
Questions? Thank you. Vicki.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Should have received in your packet the finance officer's report. And this is from December. And we had to push back claims and that type of thing. So that is why it is in February, because of all the things that we had to push back back for 2015. So we will have the quarterly transfers as an action item. So 750,000 goes from general fund to the highway and bridge fund. And emergency management has 21,568 from general fund to the emergency management fund. And this year, we have register of deeds that we are transferring money from the general fund to the register of deeds relief fund in the amount of 3,239.25. And that is to cover part of the new program. So that are, that is the action items. And the be it noted items is the auditor's account with the treasurer, the payroll additives total, the highway expenditure report, and the register of deeds statement of fees. And also, I included in your packet some of the comparisons for the last year's. Well, first of all, the 2015 totals. So you can go through that. The motor V total was 6,835,334. The tax total was 43,000, or 43,581,000. And miscellaneous receipts was 7,401,000. So the total that was receipted into the, receipted through the finance office for 15 was 57,818,397.63. So that is the total amounts. And there is a comparison for the last five years. Generally, motor V this last year went up a little over a million, like 1,100,000. And taxes went up about 2 million. And miscellaneous went up also about 800,000. And if you look through it, you saw in 2012, the miscellaneous total was more. And the reason for that is the way we were receipting in the money and how legislative audit had us, instead of some of the monies that would go directly to the townships and cities, they had us do it directly to them and not go through the county. So it looks higher in 2012. But from then now, we've changed the way we do that. So that is the comparisons. And also, we received from the Department of Revenue, the CPI, which will be 0%. So it'll be a little more challenging for next year. So hopefully, we will have some growth. But the CPI is zero. And in related emails, it was actually a negative, but they can't have a negative. So we are going with zero. So I guess that's better than a negative. So we do have that. So we will have those challenges ahead of us with the 0% CPI.
Have you seen that before, Vicki?
Yes. Yeah. It wasn't that many years ago, we had zero. Probably about four years ago, four or five. So yeah.
It's been before me.
Yeah. So, and I can bring that back to what the CPI was for the last few years. I can bring that at the next meeting. But we have had zero before. So we will work with that. And for legislation, House Bill 11, 1005, which increases the title fees, the lien fees, that type of thing, that passed unanimously out of committee. So that will be, we'll be hearing more on that. But so far, we're going good with that bill. And any other questions that you have for the finance office?
Not a question. I just wanted to say this comparison information you gave us was really helpful. Thank you.
You're welcome. And the breakdowns from this are every month in the finance officer's report, but it's good to see it compiled into a yearly report. So, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Before you took off, you know, I read this, you know, put myself to sleep. But this time, boy, I got a real wake-up call.
Well, good.
And either autographed or I have an extra copy for your new family. A very nice interview, made me proud to be a commissioner.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Vicki.
Do you want to take action on the quarterly transfers now?
Yes, we do. So letter A under finance report is action to approve the following transfers as budget appropriations for the first quarter of 2016. From general fund to highway road and bridge of 750,000. From general fund to emergency management fund, 21,568. And general fund to register of deeds relief fund of $3,239.25. Their motion.
Move to approve.
Second. Any discussion? Any none in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign? Motion carries. All right, Sheriff.
Morning.
Good morning.
Just a, just a quick note. You know, Bob has this booth every year and since he pays for it or his emergency management, he gets this space and I get this space for my, for my sheriff's. I have to, I have to color it orange so people can see it that it's on my side. Anyway, I'm just kidding. Bob had alluded to interstate and the dangers of the interstate. And I got a, I think it's about 30 seconds, is that yesterday, my deputy was out with the highway patrol and it was just miserable out there. And this is just a quick, what these guys go through out there and the danger. He's just pulling up to these guys, that one car had rolled.
You okay? Okay. I gotta, I gotta, I gotta, they're coming up to sand now, so. Why don't you guys hop in my car here with me till we get this sanded?
Hold on, I'm gonna grab my phone real quick.
Okay.
Thank you.
You rolled, didn't you? Said you want to try to maybe get back from there? Look out, look out! Get up here in my car. Move, move, move.
Now we got one more. Got a mother and a baby at the top. That's part of the delineator post. If you notice, the sander's right there. So this car goes around the sander and then loses control.
Six, two, do you want to get a trooper coming up here? I had another one just wipe out here too, almost hit me. Um, damaged my car, some object flew up and hit my vehicle.
Okay, Adam three, are you needing it for your car or for the other car?
Anyway, the sign says 80, so they go 80 until they get an icy spot. And that's what happened on the interstate that you have clear. So they, you go several miles clear and then all of a sudden, you have an icy spot. And that's, that's what happened, you know. So I just, these guys, I worry every time they go out on the interstate because it's, it's life threatening out there for these. And a trooper, one of our local troopers was north of John Pike and his car was totaled. He got rear-ended a couple miles north of that, so. In fact, the trooper, when he was calling for the trooper to come, he was just finishing up an accident, but then he got rear-ended. So then that ties him up, of course. Then now we got to get more law enforcement to go to and assist the trooper, but he was outside his car, so he didn't get hurt. But anyway. Okay, so just a quick jail rundown. We got a little relief here, we're down to 29 inmates. We dealt with four juveniles yesterday and there was a burglary out of Vaga. And the detectives were able to, to make four arrests and they ended up being juveniles, three out of Sioux Falls. So we dealt with, we've dealt with six juveniles so far this, this month. I have 117 on the 24/7 program, that's up 13. I have 41 come in twice a day for the PBTs. I have 28 on SCRAM. We have 17 on drug patches. We've had 36 new arrests since the 1st of February. Now, just quickly, you know, talking about the accident stuff, and then I happen to be three deputies down, so we got some overtime. I have one at the academy, I have one on sick leave, and, and I had one resignation. And actually, we just hired and he's getting sworn in this morning with, with the judge. So it'll be a little bit before I can get back up to full strength. So these guys have been doing overtime and, and it's been busy. Another thing, you know, we're, we're lacking some, some emergency assistance for people that are in need of gasoline or lodging, kind of a homeless situation. And I'm, it's mainly after hours, at 2, 3 o'clock in the morning or whatever. I had an incident where I did have a homeless person in jail. He was going to be homeless because he couldn't go home because he had protection orders against him and, and we ended up taking him to the homeless shelter in Sioux Falls. Because there's nothing here really for a homeless person for a length of stay, maybe a couple nights at a motel and stuff. But we're still running in some trouble for emergency assistance. So, so of course, I have to get on some type of bandwagon, so now I'm on the Salvation Army board. So we'll start. I, the police department used to do the emergency funds, but they no longer do that. So I'm going to my department and I'm going to take that over in that way. Because we're running into situations, 2, 3 o'clock in the morning, that we need shelter from somebody and, and we can't do this. There's no place to call or whatever after hours. So I, my department's going to take that on. We'll have vouchers at the, at the sheriff's office and we can get, I've talked to some hotels already that are going to offer some space and, and beta bus and, and so that hopefully clear up that little gap there that, for emergency services after hours. The other thing is, and LeAnn brought it up, Commissioner Pierce brought it up on this HB, HB 1129, guns in the courthouses. And, you know, I was notified Friday to talk, because everybody had commission meetings today and, you know, to talk to commissioners about guns in the courthouse. And of course, I've talked to the judges and, and of course, I'm in charge of security of the courthouse. I can, I consider this building an extension of the courthouse because we have grand jury in here, so I don't want weapons in this building either. And, and, I mean, I'm supposed to ask you guys what your feelings on guns in the courthouse, but I think I know that. You know, I don't know if this is going to pass or not. It looks like it's kind of going forward. But it'd be a nightmare to have guns in the courthouse. But, uh, just.
Something Marty, that this came up and then I heard it got shot down, but then something came up with about enhanced.
It's enhanced, if you have a, guns in the courthouses only if you have the enhanced permit, yeah. That's the one that you have to get, you have to go to an instructor and get qualified. There's so much classroom and then you at the range. So you have to have an enhanced permit. And then if this bill passes, if this all passes and stuff, so. And evidently, it came up because it was the general knowledge that most commissions were against it, but then evidently, there are, there might be some commissioners in other places of the state that may, maybe for this. So that's why the Sheriff's Association said, you know, maybe I should, we should visit with our commissions to make sure that, you know, we're all on board with this, with the guns in the courthouse, so.
I, I have a real concern about this bill. And on my report, I was going to ask if, if we would be willing to do a letter or something on it, so.
Perhaps in the Wild West, but not in Brookings County. You know, if, if commissioners in other places, but I, I agree. You are the ones that take care of that business, not, not, I don't care if you're a permit holder or not.
It did pass out of the House yesterday.
Yeah. I guess, I didn't follow it yesterday, to be honest with you. And I was surprised, I didn't, you know, they, they had a previous bill with the Capitol, you know, guns in the Capitol, and that went down. And I thought this was going to be a no-brainer, but I guess not.
To your point, I guess, are you thinking maybe an email or something sooner than later since it's on, up for consideration?
And I particularly think we need to contact Senator Tiedemann about it, since we'll be going to the Senate next. If I remember right, Representative Halli voted against it, Representative Munsterman voted in favor of it. It passed out of committee, seven to six, I believe, by one vote. And then it passed on the floor, I think it was 43 to 17.
Yeah, 45, 17.
Is it what's 45? So UJS had not taken a position on it. Previous years, there have been some more bills, but that didn't have to do with the enhanced permit. And I think people don't understand what the enhanced permit means. It doesn't really have anything to do with this. And UJS did come out opposed to this bill. I talked to Christie at our organization yesterday. She said they were watching it, they were hoping it was going to be killed on the floor yesterday. So I don't know exactly what they're going to be doing. But this bill is a dangerous bill for doing any judicial activities in the courthouse. You don't want people in a divorce or protection order hearing or much less a criminal matter being able to carry a weapon into the courthouse.
Absolutely not. I've been on the receiving end of that. No.
Okay, well, I guess if we have a consensus of the board to, to do a letter, could we do something here fairly soon?
I think first, we can all email Senator Tiedemann. And that we need to do right away. I'm afraid a letter might be a little late.
Yeah. But I was.
Well, I meant an email.
Yeah.
Letter, I guess.
If we have a, not only consensus, but unanimous, I would prefer to have Stacy say the entire commission and I'll just say that I just support our guys having the guns. I mean.
You okay with the letter, Larry? Okay, so we have a unanimous consensus there if we can put together.
Just the email to go just to Senator Tiedemann?
No, send it to the others too, I think. I, I realize it's.
The District 7 contingency?
And then, and then it wouldn't be bad to send to our association.
Yeah.
Karen said our association, so she can see that we've, our stance is on it.
Do you want me to include the District 4 representatives as well, since they represent a part of Brookings County?
Absolutely.
And you know, sending an email isn't real difficult. And there aren't that many people in the Senate. I don't know that it would be a bad thing if we have a good email to send it to everybody. But just throwing that out.
Well, I think we need to hear back from our association too, on what their stance is going to be. And I guess if our association says we're just going to monitor it, then I think we got to decide if we're going to get a little more aggressive with it.
And I'm, I'm not sure, it didn't say when I looked this morning, what committee it's going to go to for the Senate. And I think that's maybe the group that we should be having some contact with, but I don't know what, what committee it'll be on.
Who's this, I hate to say, who's our senator over east? Is that?
Jim Peterson.
Yeah, so, maybe that's what you said, I didn't catch it.
And I talked to the judges yesterday, of course, they're, they're not for it. So like, like Commissioner Pierce said, normally, they don't get involved, but this one, they got involved with, they were hoping the State's Attorney Association would get involved too, and, and that, so. And I'll, I'll be emailing them also. Another thing is, is that Judge Giles will be on our jail committee. And he said that Tuesdays and Thursday afternoons are the best for him. And I thought probably the two commissioners that are on that Tuesdays, that when you meet, we can just do it at 1 o'clock or whatever, that'll work good. And I was thinking, maybe, you know, if you guys wanted to schedule. Schedule something for next, next Tuesday you guys meet for the jail committee.
Who do we have? We have LeAnn and?
No, Larry and Stephanie.
Larry and Stephanie, okay.
So I figured that would work out good, since you're already here on Tuesdays.
So are you talking the 23rd?
Yeah, whenever we meet.
That's when we meet again.
Meet the, Steph, excuse me, who's on the?
Me and Larry.
Oh, okay. I thought it was Ryan. Okay.
Sorry.
No, you're fine. You're probably lucky, huh?
Where do you want to meet, Marty?
I, I think we can meet here. I think the judge will come over here, so.
Okay.
Not an issue. Oh, Terry, is Tuesday afternoon okay for you? Yeah? I didn't know if you had. I'm sorry. Yeah? I didn't know if you had... I'm sorry. I'm sure the judge would come over here.
Okay. All right. Anything else for the sheriff? Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah. All right. Uh, we have a scheduled nine fifteen that we are a little late for, um, but we'll get started. Logan Zeissler from, uh, Delta Chi is to discuss our Boulevard Tree Project, discussion of possible action. Welcome.
Thank you.
Please again announce your name and, uh, speak into the microphone there.
Again, my name is, uh, Logan Zeissler and I'm a freshman here at SDSU. And, uh, this past fall, uh, I was, uh, initiated into the Delta Chi fraternity. And, um, I was approached by Mr. Zeno Wicks back here, if any of you know him. And, uh, um, he, uh, told me about the boulevard project. And, um, I'm sure some of you might have heard about it as well, but, uh, we just, basically is what it amounts to, is we plant trees in the community, in the boulevards. And, uh, it's a philanthropy, philanthropy project for our fraternity. And it's been a pretty good success in the past two years. Um, one of my good friends in the fraternity, Riley Larson, uh, was the head of it for the past two years. And he again is, uh, he's very much so a part of it as well, but, um, he's specifically in the, he's, uh, working with the schools in Brookings to, uh, plant trees with them. And I'm just, um, heading the part as far as the community aspect. And I'll be in Brookings. And this year, we are going to White to plant fifteen trees up there. And our hope is to plant sixty trees in Brookings. And then Riley is planning on, uh, planting fifty trees within the school systems here in Brookings. Um, we ordered the trees through, uh, Brookings.
Conservation?
Yep. Thank you. And they were fifty dollars apiece. So up in White, uh, that costs us seven hundred and fifty dollars. And, um, as kind of an investment for each, uh, person that would be getting a tree in their boulevard, we ask fifteen dollars just so they have a little bit of investment. So they have a little bit of initiative to go out and water the trees and take care of it themselves. And as far as White goes, uh, that leaves us with five hundred and twenty-five dollars of automatic cost. And I already met with White and they were willing to match half of that with two hundred and fifty dollars, basically. And I guess what we'd be asking would be a contribution of two hundred and fifty dollars as well, as well as, um, in Brookings where we'd be planting sixty trees. And that would total three thousand dollars, but with the fifteen dollars times sixty that, um, the homeowners would pay, that would offset nine hundred dollars, leaving us with twenty-one hundred dollars that we'd need to, uh, make up for here in the Brookings community. So we'd also be asking for the contribution of five hundred dollars.
For that. For a total of seven hundred and fifty?
For a total of seven hundred and fifty. Thank you.
Yeah. Okay. Did you, uh, so you were in White and made a presentation to their city council and, and, uh, they approved the two fifty, a half, half share there?
Yep. They loved the project. They loved the idea. And, uh, we were planning on, uh, we will be planting fifteen trees up there. Be like, whoa, can we get twenty-five trees this year already? And they're like, well, we can come back next year, but that's what we have ordered for now. So...
And why don't you recap? Two years ago, uh, your group was in front of us and with similar, um, request. And, uh, how did that go? How'd things turn out in the last couple of years? How's, how did that go for you?
Well, uh, I mean, we're still doing the project now, of course. And it was, it was success. And a lot of the trees are still alive today, as far as I know. And, um, Riley ends, you know, told me himself, it's, it's a great way to get involved with the community. And I just love that aspect of it. And as far as like our expansions, expansion, we started with just planting sixty trees and the first year, just in Brookings. And the following year, we expanded out to Volga as well. So sixty again in Brookings and then twenty in Volga totaling eighty trees. And now, uh, we have ordered a hundred and twenty-five trees. So we're planting fifty in school systems, sixty again in Brookings, and then fifteen up in White. So...
If I remember our discussion, we kind of requested the...
We did ask that they branched out to the other cities in the community.
Branch out to the...
So that's excellent. I'm glad to see that you're going to White. And I hope you continue to do that in our small towns.
Mm-hmm.
So, having said that, I would make a motion that we give them seven hundred and fifty dollars and that it comes out of our, mm-hmm, public relations line.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. All right. Discussion.
I would like, I'm, I'm thinking we'll see you again, or somebody from your organization. And it would be nice if you were able to tell us, because not all trees make it, but if you guys had an idea, if you do some type of inventory to see how many of those trees are making it, it'd be nice to know that on, in another year when you came back.
Okay.
And, and are you having issues? I mean, have you, this is the first time you've asked a homeowner to do fifteen dollars? Or did you do that the last program too?
Um, yeah, yes, we have done that in the past as well. And that's just so the homeowner has a little bit of investment in it.
Like the idea. Did you have any problems with homeowners following through?
Um, to my knowledge, no, not really at all. Because, I mean, comparatively, if, uh, the homeowner wanted to get their own tree, they'd have to plant it themselves. And we're, we're doing the planning too. And then they'd have to pay more, about fifty dollars what we paid for the trees. And if they were to pay someone else to do, to get the tree and plant it for them, that'd approximately be around a hundred and two, a hundred, to a hundred and twenty-five dollars. So the idea all in itself is, it gets people excited and it's a great idea.
What kind of trees are you planting?
This year, we have, um, scarlet oak, bur oak, um, celebration Freeman maple, and, uh, sterling silver linden. So four different varieties.
Very good.
A question, like, from my memory. Uh, the, uh, chamber that we're gonna pull off the table probably later was nine hundred dollars. Was that coming from the public relations?
No.
Where were we gonna get the nine hundred?
Well, we'll, let's worry about that then.
Well, we could just, well, we cut it down to...
That would have been a budgeted item within, like, our, our, it, it's not out of this, not out of this particular budget line, no. Professional services and fees, I believe it would come out of. Yeah, it's a different budget line.
In your notes, we cut back, you know, our public relations. So if it was coming out there, we're gonna be a little short by the time. Okay.
No, I think, I think the chamber membership will come out of memberships or that kind of stuff. So I don't think it's in this one. So...
But I'd like to say it's, uh, I think it's a great project, especially these small communities that have had tornadoes, wind damage and such, just to replace the trees.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Keep up the good work.
I appreciate your guys' time and, uh, thank you again.
All right. Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Thank you, Logan.
Thank you. Have a good day.
You too.
All right. Uh, we're going back to department heads here. Um, Mr. Burke?
Morning. Um, basically as far as normal maintenance, it's just strictly been snow and ice. And, um, we started, uh, contacting, um, Arc Inc. to put together some stuff and information on a shop for replacing the one in Sinai, which will be exactly the same as the one in White and Bruce. And as far as the bills, there's, uh, quite a few that affect highways, but they're not, they're, they're mainly just rewording certain things. One bill that will, um, cause a little bit of a stir is, um, I can't remember the number of it, but it's a bill to make a county actively enforce, uh, weight limits to be eligible for bridge improvement grants. And it sounds worse than it really is because, um, they just wanna make sure that you have at least one, uh, time you spot check per year. And there's already on the books qualifications that you have to meet to maintain your good graces with the state and the feds as far as bridge, uh, replacement funds. So it won't be overly, um, invasive for us. However, it does just add one more little ticker that, that the state wants to impose to make sure that, uh, their funds are going to, um, you'll have to meet to get their funds. So I don't think it's any big thing, but I think you should be aware of it just so that if people ask when they see it come out of committee, it's nothing really new. It's just something that they'll follow up on. And I'm sure on our application basis, they'll have us check whether we actively participated or not. So other than that, I don't have anything unless you have any questions.
Questions?
I'd just like to say you do us proud. I, when I was out in that horrid weather, here comes one of our snowplows barreling through a cloud of snow that you couldn't see a doggone thing. And I thought, bless their hearts, they're out taking care of things.
Yeah. I think people sometimes forget that we can't see any better than they can.
No, that was nasty.
At, at our last meeting, we talked about, um, putting the bridge out, the one north of White forbid. Are we, is that in progress then?
It's, it's still, um, like I mentioned, the, the plans are moving forward. They'll be done as short as possible. But as far as putting it out for bid, we won't be able to put it out, uh, for bid until they've been approved through, um, the state because it's an on-system bridge. And so, um, even if we pay for everything, uh, ourselves and not wait till April to see about that grant, we still have to, uh, send it through them. But yeah, I'm, I called them immediately right after the meeting last week and said, it's gotta be ready to go. And they assured me again that it'll be ready. So, but as far as, as the bid process, you can't dare go out for bids until the state gives their blessing and, and says, go ahead. So, and I think that's just, it's been that way forever. So...
So banners had to get the plans to the state to be approved and everything?
They're, they're not sent there yet, but they certainly will. I told them that they gotta be done and get them out to the state. Yep. And, go ahead.
Different subject here, the design of the Sinai garage. Now, I could be mistaken here, Bob, you can help me. Do we have that as, uh, sheltered in Sinai or designed as, cause I was thinking you had, we identified areas in the smaller communities as shelters. And does that have anything to do with our county garage or anything like that?
I don't believe so. I believe it's the American Legion across the street.
Okay. Okay. I just didn't know if, with designing these buildings, if we had to take that in consideration that is designed as a shelter.
Well, I mean, it's, it's always good to have a room inside that, you know, like a, like a concrete room where an office would be in case there is a tornado. But in a, you know, truck shelter is such a Sinai, typically the person wouldn't be in there long enough to justify the extra expense to, to build the room.
Okay. So it wouldn't be some, we have adequate in each of the smaller communities with our, where our county's at, that they have adequate storm shelters. And we would need to look into that.
Yeah. It'd be my recommendation not to, not to worry about the, this particular building.
Okay.
To make it into a shelter.
All right. Anything else? Thank you.
Yep.
All right. Uh, onto the agenda items. Letter C, routine business, be it noted items. How do you wanna handle these? Do you just want me to announce them and?
Yes, if you wanna, I can, and I can put them up on the screen as we go through them. But these are all just be it noted items that just have to be, um, be it noted items in the minutes.
Okay.
So...
All right. Uh, number one, under C, volunteers recognized by Brookings County for work comp purposes. Um, we have a list of storm spotters, the radio club and RSVP list, correct? All right. Uh, number two, county employee wages for two thousand and sixteen, uh, entered into the minutes. Number three, board agrees to accept twenty-five thousand dollars in-kind credit from LG Everest of Brookings as part of their contribution for the Thirty-Fourth Avenue project. Okay. Uh, number four, authorized chairperson Krogman to sign the South Dakota Office of Emergency Management Report of Personnel Action for Robert Hill. Number five, authorized chairperson Krogman to sign the South Dakota Office of Emergency Management Report for Personnel Action for Richard Haugen. Comments on that? All right. Uh, we will move on then to our regular business. Uh, letter A, action to approve a request to fill vacancy for the Deputy Director of Equalization in the Equalization Department. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. All right. Discussion. Hearing none, please call the roll.
Wyeth?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right. Letter B, action to approve an agreement sixteen dash zero three, an application for occupancy of right-of-way made by Sioux Valley Energy.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Discussion. Hearing none, please call the roll.
Miller?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Wyeth?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Letter C, action to approve agreement sixteen dash zero four, an agreement to provide for the striping and the continuing maintenance of county roads within Brookings County.
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second? Okay. Discussion.
Yep. One little comment, and I apologize that this got on so late. But if you notice the date on the letter from the state, it, it'll kinda give you an indication how the state operates. Uh, that was put in the mail the twenty-ninth of January. So we didn't get it till after February first. And they want it, if you read the letter, by February twelfth. So I had to get it in this time. But they are just unbelievably famous for sending stuff out at the last minute and thinking everybody can just get it in. So I apologize. That was my doings. And thank you, Stacy, for putting it on.
Yes. No problem.
I like the word famous. That's a good one. All right. Any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Jensen?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Wyeth?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Letter D, discussion and possible action on approving the two thousand and sixteen chamber membership fees. We had this tabled, so, uh, look for a motion removed from the table.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. All right. We have a second. All in favor moving from the table, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign? All right. Discussion, possible action.
Move approval.
On, do you wanna put a value on it?
There, there was actually a motion already on the, on the table to approve it from last week.
For nine hundred, for nine hundred dollars, right?
Yeah, for nine hundred dollars.
Okay. Discussion then.
Well, I appreciated, uh, Commissioner Miller's comments and my, they were right on my concerns. And, uh, since our last meeting, I visited with David and he's visited with you. I see in your report. Did he call you again or?
I have, no, I have not talked to him since.
Well, uh, he understands, I think, better now. And, uh, they will continue to proceed by the, this time next year with, uh, more, cause the city council has, uh, Brookings has expressed the same concern.
Oh, really? Good.
Yeah. And, uh, so I think we'll see something different. We don't next year then. I guess we can be, but I guess I'm willing to say, okay, one more year. Let's go with what's there and...
I, I did hear from David yesterday. Um, and one thing he did discuss was, um, the ability to change some of the benefits to equal value. Um, so for example, we, we received two annual meeting tickets for our, our investor level, nine hundred dollar level. Um, and there's other people that said, you know, they had the golf tournament and they said, we don't use the golf tournament. Can we get some more annual tickets? And they were willing to do that type of, of a movement. So, um, you know, I'm not sure, you know, we do the think local showcase. I'm not sure we wanna give that up. I think that turned out very good and, uh, useful there. Um, uh, you know, we don't need the two businesses, I guess. Um, but one email blast. I don't know what the values of those are. I mean, like being on the website. Um, you know, so I don't know if there's anything we can really change for this, this year and add for it. Um, but we just need to keep that in mind next year if a different program comes up. And, and he explained to me, he's not opposed to doing this. It's just that they worked so hard at getting this investor level, uh, together. They'd like to see it work out for at least a year or two before they start making changes. So... Okay. Any further discussion? Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Pierce?
Aye.
Wyeth?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Or Johnson?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right. Number nine, Commission Director, Department Director Report.
The draft agenda for the spring workshop that's coming up, March 16th and 17th, I included with my report. They do have some areas left to fill, so I mean, if you feel strongly, if there's a topic that you would like to see, let me know, and I can share that with Chris out at the SDACC. The fourth quarter report from Community Health is also a part of my report. Karen and Karen Larson and Jen Burns came to the last meeting to give their report in person. However, we, we received that later than when the packet, after we had put the packet out, so I included it this time. On the retirement party for Joyce, that announcement was with my report as well. The Brookings, some things that were on your desk, this, in front of you this meeting, we did get an invitation now to the Brookings County Towns and Townships Meeting. Chris spoke about that coming up Thursday, March 3rd. It's out at the SwifTeL Center. The 11 o'clock, it starts with the Department of Equalization will be giving their presentation at 11:00. The lunch is at noon, and then they'll have their meeting after that. So again, for your calendars, Thursday, March 3rd, 11 o'clock starts with the equalization information. I also handed out the third legislative update from SDACC, as well as a county list of the bills that are currently in the hopper and going through the process out at the legislature, is in front of you. Some other last minute things I received, a PUC agenda for February 12th for their upcoming meeting. We did get some information on the upcoming NACO WEAR Conference. And we did receive last night, an email from David Merheb with the Chamber on Hockey Day in America that's coming up, and they're looking maybe for some county and city representation at a pickup broom ball game, Larson Ice Arena on 5:30 on Sunday, February 21st. So I don't know if that requires skates or just do you slide it on, down your tennis shoes? I don't know.
It doesn't matter to me, I can skate.
If anyone's interested in participating, you can let me know, and I can, and I can sure look into it more for you.
I think young Ryan is.
He's a hockey dad, we.
And I used, I used to play when I was little, so. I don't have to wear skates.
You might be, okay. I can, I can do some looking, checking in on, checking into it for you guys.
Too old to fall down on ice.
And just a reminder, I'm going to be gone, well, tomorrow, Bob and I are going down to Sioux Falls to that FEMA training, so I'll be out of the office all day tomorrow, and then have some vacation coming up the end of the week and over the weekend, long with holiday weekend, so.
Somewhere cold.
Oh, no, somewhere very nice and warm. So, any other questions for me? Otherwise, that's all I have.
All right. Deputy State's Attorney Report.
We are working at our office on statistics, we'll try to have something in my next report, and we might even have Clyde here to talk about it, so things are, Marty knows, up. So, that's it.
All right. Moving right along, Commissioner Reports.
Yeah. On January 26th, as you all know, but I'll say it for the public that might be listening, we had the planning and zoning hearing on the comprehensive plan. And after listening to some testimony from various different people, there were, there were some amendments made to the comprehensive plan, mainly wording changes, not a whole lot that was substantive. We had maybe 25 to 30 people, and I know all of you were there, that attended the meeting, and then we'll be having our commission hearing on that this afternoon. On January 28th, I attended the SwifTeL Advisory Board Meeting, followed by the Chamber Mixer at SwifTeL. At the Advisory Board Meeting, Tom Richter presented a report for 2015. SwifTeL's operating the Black had a good year, and, and things looked very promising. They are, you may, maybe saw this in the newspaper, going to be borrowing slightly over a million dollars from the utilities for purposes of putting new seats in the SwifTeL Center. And that's, that's going, that's a long-term plan for them. On February 2nd, as you all, all may or may not know, I also sit on the City of Brookings Planning and Zoning Board. And we had our meeting that night and looked at what our goals would be for the City Planning and Zoning Board in 2016. And one of the goals that the commission adopted was that to meet with the county to work on joint jurisdiction issues. So that's on, on that commission's goal list for 2016. On February 3rd, I attended the Chamber Women in Leadership Meeting, which was excellent. And then on February 4th, the Chamber Governmental Affairs Committee met. We did talk about House Bill 1129 already, so I won't say anything more about that. But we talked about Brookings Day at the legislature, the cost ended up being $9,357.56, and SDSU is paying their $4,800. Our share would be $463.14, so we'll be getting a refund check for part of what we paid. We'll be getting some money back on that. And the other thing that happened, I think this was on Friday, I got an email, JDC, we're going to be having a JDC meeting sometime in the next couple of months, and it looks like there's something urgent coming out, but they didn't say what it was. They just said, save this date, and, and we're going to have some important items, and we want to be sure that everybody could be there. So I think there's some movement, last year, we never really met. So it'll be interesting to see what's going on with that. I don't know, Terry, if you're hearing anything from JDC, but that's my report. Thank you.
All right. On the 26th, I attended the zoning meeting, and that's about all I have. Two other meetings were postponed due to the weather, and I'll report on those next date, so.
On the 26th, I attended the county social and then went to planning and zoning, for the comprehensive plan meeting, and I listened to the conversations there, it was informative. January 28th, I had domestic abuse, that's business as usual. February 1st, I had an extension board meeting. Stacy, I would like you to keep on the front burner, the fact that we need to replace that front stoop in front of the resource center when the weather is.
I already have it on a March agenda to discuss here as to what we're going to do as, as the spring arrives. We can't really do anything at this time, but yes, I have it, I have it already on an upcoming agenda.
Okay. And then the other thing that the board asked was, they wondered if a decision had been made regarding a signature on the vouchers. And I said that we had not made a decision. So I'm guessing, I don't know, I, I'm not sure how we should proceed with that.
Is that something that legislative audit needs to give us an opinion on, Vicki?
Yeah, I can sure ask them. I know that they're going to want at least, you know, like you guys do for when you sign off for our claims, even if it's after the fact, but they will want a signature from the board. You know, even if, even if the claims are approved, if they can go through them and sign, just so, you know, we know that they've looked at it.
And I, I will say this, eventually we'll have a conversation, but I'm, I'm opposed to checks being written before they're approved and being approved afterwards. I, I don't think that's a good way for us to do business.
The two extension board members that were appointed to the new committee are Deb Ford and Jennifer Pickard. And that's the committee that's meeting with. February 3rd, I attended the Will Luncheon, and it, it was entitled Running Red Lights, and the gals from Hitch Design did the presentation, and it was, it was a delightful presentation. And then on a side note, I've been asked to be on a messaging task force for the next division, Brookings. And so I just wanted to let you all know that I've been asked to be on that.
All right. Thank you.
Well, it was at the planning, zoning, Chamber, I mean, the county gathering. Probably the biggest thing was 28th, the hospital board, and their part of their action was they instructed Cell and, I'm not drawing a blank.
Merkley?
Yeah, Merkley, geez, to come and address the county commission at some time and the city commission. And I ran by a few board members afterwards, because, you know, I'm only ex-official there, and I didn't want to barge in, but I want you guys all be interested to have a personal tour and meeting at the facility sometime versus having them come here and give us a report. And they could do the same with the city, maybe at the same time, it'd just be the two governmental bodies, get a tour. So I'll, I'll relay that back, okay. And then if, if I have something, if Chairman Krogman would allow me to read something, I have written something out. "I have promised in 2012 that I'd only run twice. With great regret, I will only serve out the last year of my first term. I campaigned on the theme listening and leading, and I've really worked hard on improving my listening skills. However, you cannot listen if you cannot hear. I have had hearing problems for over 40 years. For the last 15 years, since digital hearing days became available, I've been able to get by satisfactorily. This last October, I had sudden loss of hearing, hearing loss in my left ear, and then December, it was my right ear. This type of loss cannot be helped with hearing aids or implants. The chance of any recovery is slim, I've seen a million doctors. What people say to me is important, especially you commissioners, and although I can hear it to some degree, I think I'll tire of saying, and others will tire of hearing, sorry. Can you repeat that? And I want to thank Sean, who has improved the speaker system. I pick up pretty good what everybody's saying here. It's, you're off mic, I have no clue, no offense, but you all sound like Donald Duck to me. And Mike Bartley is going to work with Sean, and we're going to experiment during the next week on some other devices to help me. I promise to continue to work hard this last year for the people of Brookings County. For those who have not been so satisfied with my work, you have a light at the end of the tunnel. If my hearing comes back, I may be back, but I have delayed this announcement long enough. Commissioner Krogman, who I hope runs again, and I both filed early in 2012 and attended many commission meets before we were even elected. This helped us be better prepared to hit the ground running. Brookings County is full of qualified people to serve, and I encourage them to please give running for county commissions serious consideration. Petitions to run for 2016 are available now at the finance office, so, thank you."
Thanks, Tom. Okay. 26th, I attended the county social and then also the zoning meeting afterwards. 27th, we had a BDC meeting. They are in the process of hiring two new workforce. One is Director of Entrepreneurship. She resigned and took another position in Sioux Falls, and the replacement, that was Beth Knutson. And then they're adding a new position, a full-time workforce development coordinator, somebody that will work full-time on working with the industries in town to work on workforce, their needs and what they're looking for, and try to facilitate opportunity for that. So most of the discussion was on their job descriptions and what they should be doing and what their focus is on, so. They're working towards that, and hopefully they get a good turnout with a good group to choose from. And then that's, that's it for me there. The one thing I do need to talk about is I did get appointed to the housing task force by the city, and they put out a huge list of dates to be able to be available. And one of the dates was Wednesday, the 10th tomorrow. Problem is, is I have an E911 meeting at 2:00 on that one, which had been rescheduled because other people couldn't get to either. So I, I told them since that we do have an assistant chair there, so there if you can run that meeting for me, or if anybody else would like to come in, in my spot to, at that meeting if you can, but I'm, I'm going to be at that housing task force meeting, it's basically the only time they could do it with all those people. So, you know, if anybody, if you're able to run it, that'd be great. I think your vice chair, is that right? Yeah, your vice chair is, is there, it'll be your first meeting, so I apologize. Throw it right into the fire, but, but I don't know if anybody else wants to come and sit in, in my spot too. I think they've got the agenda, Christine, there. I have not told her yet that I would not be able to make it, but I can send an email out to her today too, or we can let her know, so.
Yeah, I can, Bob and I are both going to be down in Sioux Falls tomorrow too. That meeting got rescheduled to the date, and that FEMA training is something that doesn't get rescheduled, and we've had that planned for several months, so.
So I apologize, I was, basically it was down to two of us that couldn't make the meeting, and they called and said, can you, any way you can make it that day? And I said, well, I can, I can postpone it.
Time and place?
It's at noon, or no, excuse me, 2:00 here.
Oh.
Out of the picture. Okay. And that's, I mean, we don't have to have a person, but it just, if somebody was interested, they could go there, because eventually down the road, the chair and the vice chair will be on that committee, so. All right. Let me see, anything else on there? Okay, well, we're going to take a recess until, and reconvene at 1:00 for our other scheduled agenda meeting, which is the public hearing of comprehensive land use plan in Brookings County. So I'll declare our meeting in recess until 1:00 today.